It is January 3, 2023. We are at the Vets Hall. We have a quorum, and Mike Rodriguez will be joining us via Zoom.
Can you hear me, Susan? This is Mike.
Now, that was an interesting one. Technology, folks, I tell you.
Apologies, we're working on it.
They're working on it. So with your permission, I think we'll go ahead, and we can probably take care of things like the quorum, call to order. How about a moment of silence? Thank you, everyone. And we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Is this any better? Still working on it. That might be a little bit better. Any Planning Commissioner announcements? Joe, Asia, and Mike, welcome. Can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Mike?
Can you hear me?
Mr. Rodriguez, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Hi. Happy New Year to you. Do you have any announcements?
No, I don't.
All righty. So we're going to move on, while they're hopefully fixing this, to general public comment. This is for any item not on the agenda. Anybody want to come up and make public comment? I believe that, Mike, is working well. Ms. Winholtz, welcome, and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, and this is Betty Winholtz. And I don't know if you can hear me, but I can't hear you sitting out there.
Okay.
Okay. I have three items that are all questions. One has to do with the orange cones that have been lining South Main Street for the last two weeks. There's no posting on any of them. I don't know why they're there, if you're getting ready to pave or something else is going on.
Maybe I'll just talk like this. That hurts my ears.
Yeah. I can hear you fine.
Yeah. So my question is about the cones, why they're up, why they've been up so long, and what's their purpose. My second point is at 2996, and I think it's Alder. Between Alder and Birch, there was an apartment building that the Planning Commission, Mr. Graffia may be the only one that remembers, that was approved, I think in 2019, maybe 2018. And it was approved as an apartment building. It has since been turned into a vacation rental totally, like all six or eight units. This was brought up during the unhosted hearing that you had on the corner of Main Street and San Jacinto. And I'm wondering how neighbors or residents can get this addressed and get that back to long-term housing and why it's vacation rental when that's not how it was approved. And I think it's in residential zoning, but you'll have to check with me. Or check. It's between Alder and Birch, which I think is residential. My third point has to do with, please remember. I know I should write things down. Oh, it has to do with the low-income housing on Highway 41. I have a friend who's in a mobile home park. She's been trying to get information about how you apply. My memory, which may not be true, was that Morro Bay residents would have preference, and she's been told that's not true. She's also been told it's for families, but I know that some of them are one-bedroom apartments, and I'm not sure how that can be for a family. And so she was distraught, so she contacted me. And I'm asking you, what's the process from here on out? And how's that going to work? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Winholtz. Anybody else for public comment for items not on the agenda? Do we have anybody online for public comment?
There are no raised hands in the queue.
AGP?
There are no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you. All right. So we will close public comment. Staff, do you have any responses to any of those items that were brought up?
I wish I had more. I'm not sure what the orange cones are for. Certainly, we can find out, and we'll at least respond back to you on that, Betty. As for the apartment building on Alder, there's no approval for it to be a vacation rental project, so we'll have to look into it. Have code enforcement take a look at it. Appreciate you bringing that to my attention. I was not aware of that. And the low-income housing project, that's a Haslow project. It doesn't have a condition that Morro Bay residents were going to get preference, but Haslow did indicate that they were going to do that. So we'll certainly reach out and find out what the scoop there is. And I'm happy to report back to you, Betty, so you can get that information over to whoever brought it to your attention as well. Okay.
Thanks, Scott. I do remember the conversation with Haslow and indicating that it would be preference for Morro Bay residents. Also, I believe it was going to be one-, two-, and three-bedroom apartments, obviously with one bedroom being for single or a couple. So. All right. Let's move on to our consent calendar. We have our current and advanced planning and processing list, and we have the approval of minutes from Morro Bay Planning Commission meeting from November 15. Anybody need to pull any of these items? Nope. Mike, do you need to pull any of these items?
No. No.
No? Okay, thank you. We're getting our reports from the side room on Mike's comments, so we are hearing from him. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes and file the current and advanced planning and processing list?
I move that we approve the minutes.
And a second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And we'll assume an aye from Mike?
Aye.
Unless you'd like to pull the...
I'm going to do a roll call vote. Commissioner Oshin? Commissioner King?
Yes. Oh, sorry.
Commissioner Ingraffia?
All right, yes.
Chairperson Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you. Motion passes 5-0.
This is going to be a challenge today. So we'll move on to our public hearings. We have two items on here, B1 and B2, both on Beach Comer Drive. We are looking at a variance request, but also an adjustment to the parcel. And we need to consider some creating two conforming parcels where three non-conforming parcels are currently in existence. And Nancy Hubbard will introduce us to this project. I hope I got a good mic. I think I got a good mic. All right. So as we mentioned, this is 3202 Beach Comer Drive, which is a coastal development permit parcel map and variance request for a demo of an existing home and construction of a new home in a land action. Is it not on? All right. So this is the site information. The site has frontage on Beach Comer. It's existing three small parcels totaling 11,000 square feet. The existing home is built across one of the, one or more of the property lines, the existing property lines. Historic building assessment. The existing home was built in 1954 with a subterranean garage level. It did not meet the criteria for historic registry. The land action is a parcel map. There are three non-conforming-sized parcels from the original subdivision. One existing home is on the site, and it's built across property lines. Owners want to create two conforming parcels, each over 5,000 square feet in size. And the process requires a parcel map, which requires Planning Commission approval. This is the approximate configuration of the new parcels. Where the star is, is 3202 Beach Comer. The other one on the north is the other project that we're going to talk about tonight. The south parcel is 5,882 square feet, and the north parcel is 5,118 square feet. This is a site plan and site layout. The red line is the property line after the parcel map approval. And this shows the layout of the home on the site with the hardscape and the landscaping, and improvements, including landscaping on the site and in the public right-of-way. This is the living level of the proposed homes. The section, the blue section to the left is the common areas, kitchen, dining, living room. And the other part of the house is bedroom, bath, and laundry. And this is 2,567 square feet of conditioned living area. Above the living area is a roof deck. This is a 963-square-foot roof deck. And the parapet walls, as you can see on the elevation below, are a little lower on a couple of the elevations. And one of the conditions of the approval is to increase the parapet or the solid wall to meet the required railing height for the deck, which is 42 inches. This is a building section that shows, again, the railing. They're asking for 12 inches additional in height for windscreen above the required code railing of 42 inches. The parapet walls, again, on the east and the west are at full rail heights. And the parapet walls on the north and the south are lower and don't screen the view of the roof from the pedestrian level. And that is what the condition of approval is, to have those be raised up to 42 inches. Variances can be granted when they meet all of the following findings. Finding one, the request does not constitute a special privilege not afforded to other homes in the area. Staff response is that other homes in the area have complied with height standards. There is no condition that staff is aware of that would allow for height exception for a windscreen that would not be considered a grant of special privilege. Finding number two, there are special circumstances with the property that deprive this property of privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity. And staff response is that there are no special circumstances existing at the site to justify the requested variance. And as such, the findings cannot be made, and the variance should not be granted. Finding number three, the request is consistent with the general plan and the local coastal plan related to protection of scenic resources, and the project meets the development standards. And the image here is showing the subject property's palm tree and the distance on the right side. So although the height does not interfere with the public views, the variance request does not comply with the development standards, specifically the height requirement. And therefore, there are no special circumstances that warrant granting this request. This is the lower level, subterranean garage shop level. This is 2,412 square feet. And it is intended for parking vehicles, shop area, parking electric or smaller vehicles, and elevator, equipment room, and stairs to the living level. California Building Code defines a story. If the finished floor directly level, finished floor level directly above a basement is more than six feet above grade for more than 50% of the total perimeter, or is more than 12 feet above grade at any point, the basement shall be considered a story. So if you look at this project, the project meets the criteria as a level, but not a story. So it's the same as the other project that was approved for a subterranean garage at 110 Orcas. This is the site zoning and overlay areas for R1 S2A standards in the center and the proposed project on the right side. As you can see, the proposed project meets all of the standards other than the height if the variance request is granted for the windscreen. This is material board and a photo simulation of the subject property. And this is a view taken from the bridge on Beach Comer with Orcas access to the garage below. Character of the neighborhood. The neighborhood is a blend of modern homes and older homes. They're mostly large, single-story with low-pitched roofs. Styles include Spanish, mid-century modern, bungalow, basic ranch. Most of the homes have a very strong presentation along their street frontage, especially to the west side. This home, other than the garage level and the roof deck, meet the residential design guidelines and fits into the character of the neighborhood. Staff recommendation is for approval of the coastal development permit and the parcel map, but denial of the variance request pursuant to the findings and conditions in the Planning Commission Resolution 01-23. Thank you very much, Ms. Hubbard. Ooh, I think we got our mics to a good level now. All right. Back to the commission. Any questions for staff? Nothing from Mr. Oshin. Mr. Ingraffia?
I don't have the file in front of me, but I believe with respect to the garage, the file said that the garage would not be permitted for human habitation.
That's correct.
So what does that say in terms of art studio, exercise spa, billiard table, those sorts of things?
I think it's, well, let me read the condition. I believe it's, so lower-level subterranean garage basement area shall not be used as living space, and overnight occupancy is prohibited. So I would say conditioned living space would be living space. So if you want to exercise in your cold garage, I think you're okay.
So you can't sleep there, but you can exercise there?
Yes. Ms. King?
Under the new California ADU laws, could a garage, that garage, be turned into a living unit?
It could, but it would have to meet the exiting requirements from fire and building code. And with so much of it underground, that would mean they would have to change the front that faces Orcas and have that meet the exiting requirements.
What do you mean, change the front? Like put in a proper door, basically?
Yeah, replace where the daylight side of the structure is. And that would have to meet the requirements. So you really couldn't have a deep space with a bedroom in the back, for example. Can't build it as a cave.
Right.
No cave.
Not one exit.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Rodriguez, do you have any questions for staff on this project?
No, I don't.
Thank you. And we heard you perfectly this time. All right. We will open up for public comment on this project. Do we have the applicant or their agent here? Yes, sir. You may approach the podium.
My name is Steve Perry. I'm the project manager for this particular project. The ownership are also Perry's, so they're my relatives. Project is owned by two brothers. They share the project under an enterprise LLC. So we built the house, the two houses there. They're used for families. The two brothers have their, parents are going to be using the north house, and they'll use the south house. They're all second homes. No one will be living there. And they'll be just used periodically. I know way back when, there was first proposed a 5,000-square-foot house there, and then the community had some concerns about such a large house when, you know, I think 2,700 is the largest house in there. That project has since gone by the wayside, and they're putting in 2,2500s rather than the large 5. So we tried to be compliant with the neighborhood, with the planning direction that we've had along the ways. And we've been doing this project for quite a while now, so we're happy to come to this point. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if the neighbors have any concerns or issues with what we're doing. I'd be happy to respond. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other public comment on this project? Yes, sir.
My name is Jim Duffy with Tenover Studio, the project architect. And really, just here as a resource for you if you have any questions. Understanding with the variance that it doesn't meet the technical definitions, you know, put in the staff report. We're hoping that, just as a matter of, you know, convenience for the occupants, we don't feel that requesting the variance of a 12-inch or a 6-inch glass windscreen is going to detract from the neighborhood or cause any, you know, undue harm on the adjacent property. So we're hoping that possibly you'll consider that request.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Any other public comment on this project? Ms. Winholtz?
Betty Winholtz, I have two comments. One has to do with, and you can see it here in the picture, landscaping right up to the edge of the street into the right-of-way. And they mentioned that. And if you've been on this street, Orcas, you know it's a dead end, and people do walk down there. There's not a lot of cars, but it is nice to have that off-the-road walking space and like the sidewalk. And I'm not sure it's advisable to plant all the way to the edge of the street. That would be my concern about planting in the right-of-way. And then my second point does have to do with the variance. And I would say 20 to 25 years ago, it was quite a controversy in the beach track because people were trying to, another foot here, another foot here. And the HMO, is that the right letters? The Homeowners Association, HOA, came to the city and said, we want this strictly enforced. We don't want exceptions. These were the guidelines that were given to us when we started this development back in the '60s or the '70s. And to give an inch is to give too much. And we want it strictly enforced. And so I would convey that to you today, that it may be glass, it may be only 12 inches. But since they're starting from the ground up anyways, can't that 12 inches be absorbed in one of the other levels? And so they can meet the strict limit of what this area should have.
Thank you, Ms. Winholtz. Do we have any other public comment? Seeing none from the floor, we'll ask AGP, do we have anybody in the queue waiting to speak?
We have no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you very much. I did want to acknowledge we had gotten an email from Tim Galley, who was also concerned with the variance request and urged the commission to deny that request. So we'll close public comment, bring it back to the commission. Discussion.
Quick, I have a clarifying question, I guess, that I should have asked. The parapet heights, could you explain that one more time and how that impacts what they're asking for?
It doesn't impact the variance. The, I'm asking that the parapet or a solid railing be put to meet the code requirement of 42 inches all the way around. What they're asking for is an additional 12 inches on top of that of windscreen.
So a portion of the railing now is glass, correct? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. There's two sides of this house where the parapet drops down, and the windscreen, see-through windscreen is a larger section of the required railing. So it's much more visible, whatever's going on on the roof deck, from a pedestrian level. And so the interpretation of the residential design guidelines is the roof deck really should not be apparent from the ground level. You shouldn't see it. You shouldn't see furniture up there. And so to have a glass railing versus a solid railing makes a difference.
I see.
And you really probably, in this instance, want to reduce the amount of glass. It is not a material that's consistent with the material of the main portion of the home. So de-emphasizing it is also one of the reasons for the condition.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Oshin?
Quick clarification. At, I think around 5 o'clock, we got an email from Walter Auerbach. He's concerned about the size of the house, saying that if you look at the garage and the upstairs, it's around 6,000 feet. He's suggesting that's out of character for the neighborhood. Would staff care to address that comment?
So it probably is on the large side for that neighborhood. The garage level, though, looks just, you can't tell how big the garage is from the street. So as far as the appearance and the kind of the fitting in with the character of the neighborhood, you can't tell from looking at the three garage doors that the garage is that large. So I think our opinion was that it was to scale. It's just on a very unique site where there's maybe only one other that has that same elevation change in a lower subterranean garage.
So the above garage is roughly around 3,000 feet or a little bigger? Square footage?
20, 25.
25?
Yeah.
So that is pretty much in keeping with the surrounding houses then? Thanks.
Mr. Rodriguez, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I just wanted the applicant to comment on the variance request findings that the commission has to make. If they could just further comment on that, because I think that's very important. That was brought up by a couple people as well. So I just want to hear more information on why they feel we should grant that variance.
Thanks. Mike, they're coming to the podium.
Again, the idea of the roof deck, which would be for the occupants to capture the beautiful view of the ocean. We're at kind of a pretty limited ceiling height to get under the required maximum.
What are your ceiling heights?
Eight foot. So taking those down to 7'6" or 7' is probably not ideal. So that's kind of where we're at. We're between a rock and a hard place with the architecture, the site, and the, you know, the height limit. We tried our best to create a very low-slung building, aside from this particular elevation, which just has the two-story height. But tried to really create a low-slung building that meets the character of the adjacent properties and provide them a roof deck at the same time. And so this is kind of where we ended up. The 42-inch parapet height, we have that with the solid wall. It's above that that we're requesting the variance with a little bit of glass for wind protection and still view from a sitting position.
All right. Thank you. Mike, did that answer your question?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. King?
Before you sit down, I was wondering if you could possibly address Betty's concern about plantings or if staff has anything about the allowance of planting in the right-of-way or if that is a right-of-way?
It's, yeah, Sam, it's really a public works decision. And in this case, they're not requiring sidewalks in that area. So landscaping probably is better than having no one do anything with that area. Just from personal experience, where landscaping doesn't go to the edge of, a rough edge like that, what you end up with is a tremendous amount of dirt in the road. So, you know, with strategic planting, it can at least hold the soil off the roadway and hopefully eliminate some of that runoff that would, you know, go down storm drains and so on. So.
I agree.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Joe, have you got anything?
Well, I'm persuaded that the site doesn't have any particular circumstance which would require something beyond the maximum height. And I think the property could have been designed from the very beginning to accommodate the 14-foot height and still accommodate a 12-inch glass screen. And to go back and do it now, I'm sure would require considerable effort and considerable expense and maybe even some degrading of the aesthetics. But nevertheless, it could be done. So I don't support the variance.
Thank you. Any comments?
I guess I'd like to, one, add to thank the applicant and the architect. I think the architecture is very nicely done. I think you've done well to modulate the scale of the house. You know, I've walked the road in the area. The house feels good to me, the proposed house relative to the neighborhood. So I very much like the proposal. But I'm going to join Joe and say... going to join Joe and say, I think Betty's comment, you know, to stay strictly with the criteria and not grant the variance. I wish you lots of luck with the project. It's a really nice project. It's well thought through. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Ms. King has another question?
I'm sorry. Just to clarify, this came in under the old zoning code, right? Which is why-
Correct.
-they wouldn't be required in additional and low fee for being 25, over 25. Okay. Just wanted to clarify that.
Well, I think I can say I agree with, I may be putting words in other people's mouths with the other commissioners, that I would not approve granting the variance, would approve the new parcel lines, parcel map, and what else did we have on here? Parcel split and the permit, but, you know, uphold staff's recommendation to deny the variance.
Chair Stewart, I'm ready to make a motion when you're ready.
Make it. Mr. Roche?
I would say we adopt staff's recommendation.
Do we have a second?
I can second that.
And Ms. King seconded. Do we have any discussion on the motion?
Yes, Susan. This is Mike.
Yes, Mike.
Yeah. One of the reasons I asked the applicant the question I did is because I was hoping that they would say something that would induce me to make these findings. But obviously, that's going to be difficult if we're following the strict guidelines. So, I agree that we could not make those findings. So, thank you.
Thanks for that, Mr. Rodriguez. All right. I think we may be ready to call the vote. Commissioner Rodriguez?
No. Wait, yes, without the approval of the variance.
Yes. Commissioner Ingraffia?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Vice Chair Roche?
Yes.
Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for that. So, we're going to do deja vu all over again on this lot with Agenda Item B2, the other half of the lot. So, this one, since we've already approved the parcel map, we're really just looking at the variance again?
We're looking at the home design.
The home design, okay.
And the variance, which is the same issue, just slightly different twist to it.
Okay. Let's have the staff report.
All right. So, this is a coastal development permit and a variance request for construction of a new home. And this was assigned a new address, 3230 Beach Comer Drive. So, again, same parcel. This is the north half. It's got frontage on Beach Comer Drive in Panay. It will be a 5,118 square foot parcel. This is, it's on the north side, and it's exactly what I just said. It's a little repetitive. So, here's a site plan and site layout, and the red line shows where the property line will be once the parcel map is approved. This shows the layout of where the home is, its position on the site, and the hardscape and the landscaping. And again, this does also have landscaping into the public right-of-way along Panay. And it shows two trees that are on the site that are proposed to be preserved. This is a single-story home, and it has a garage and laundry in the pink area. The other faded color, whatever that color is, is the bedroom and the bathrooms for the home. And then, the blue area is the kitchen, dining, and the living room. This also has a roof deck. It's 801 square feet. And again, the parapet walls on this one are too low, I think, on all of the sides. So, the condition of approval would be to increase the height of the parapet walls so that they meet the deck railing requirement. And this is asking for a height variance of 6.5 inches for additional windscreen on top of the solid required deck railing. And this is a building section that shows the same perspective. The top area above the dotted line is the additional windscreen, which is not required to meet the code deck railing requirement.
Nancy, can you tell me the ceiling height? Is it the same? I can't read the number.
I can't read the number from here either. We'll need a child to come in here and read that number.
It looks like it might be 9'6".
Could be.
Thank you.
The architect can certainly address that when we get to that point.
Okay. So, parapet walls on all sides are too low, and as I mentioned before, that's a condition of approval. To have the parapet walls come up to 42 inches, and then the windscreen would be a little bit more, because this home has a lower height, and it's only asking for 6.5 inches of variance. So, variances can be granted when they meet all of the findings. I don't know. These are the exact same findings as the other project that we reviewed. Should I go through them anyway?
Yeah, just go through it for the record.
Okay. The request does not constitute a special privilege not afforded to other homes in the area. Staff response is, other homes in the area have complied with the height standards. There is no condition that staff is aware of that would allow a height exception beyond the required safety rail height that would not be considered a grant of special privilege. Finding two, there are special circumstances with the property that deprive this property of privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity. Staff response is that there are no special circumstances existing at the site to justify the requested variance, and as such, the findings cannot be made, and the variance should not be granted. Finding number three, the request is consistent with the general plan and the local coastal plan related to the protection of scenic resources and the requirement to meet the development standards. And staff response is, although the additional height does not interfere with the public views, the variance request does not comply with the development standard, specifically height, and therefore, there are no special circumstances that warrant granting this request. This is the site zoning development requirements in the overlay area. So, R1 S2A in the center column, proposed project on the right. It meets or exceeds all of the development standards. The exception would be if the variance was granted, it would be 6.5 inches greater than the development standard for height restriction. This is, this home is the same finishes and exterior color palette and lighting as the other home. And the blending into the neighborhood, it's a blend of modern and older homes that are large, single-story with low-pitched roofs, including styles, Spanish mid-century modern bungalow and basic ranch. And most homes have a very strong presentation along the street frontage, especially on the west side. This proposed home, other than the roof deck and the railing type, meets the residential design guidelines and fits into the character of the neighborhood. And that concludes my presentation, and the staff recommendation is for approval of the coastal development permit with denial of the variance pursuant to the findings and conditions in the Planning Commission Resolution 02-23.
Thank you very much. Any questions for staff? Being none, Mr. Rodriguez, do you have any questions for staff?
No.
All right. Thank you. We will open this for public comment. Anyone like to come up? I think probably the architect and developer have been up before, if you have anything more to add.
This is the applicant again. This is a question. Nancy, is it possible to go to Slide number two of your opening PowerPoint?
You mean the other property?
It was, it was just, it was just the elevation of the existing property. Second slide you had.
Did you say that for the other home or this home?
Existing home.
Oh, the existing home. That's on the other slide presentation.
Okay.
What was, what was your comment?
Well, I wanted to view from the front of the existing home, looking west, over the top of the Morro Strand State Park, which is between us and the water.
Right.
The trees of that state park block, I looked at it today, and I was trying to get a measurement from about 180 degrees. I'd say 40% of the ocean is blocked by the height of those trees. And those trees really don't benefit the parking area for the campers. They're just on the side of the hill, and they've grown quite high. So, if you're probably wondering why we're putting whale-watching decks on frontage property, is because most of our view is blocked. And if you have any connections with that state park and how we can get those trees trimmed, we would take direction. So, anyway, for the people that are probably wondering why we're putting those decks there, it's for that reason. We've lost quite a bit of view from the state park's blockage with those trees. Thanks.
Thank you for that. Any other public comment on this project? Ms. Winholz?
Thank you, Betty Winholz. I think it's more obvious with this home than the previous home in terms of the variance, that they have a full 14 feet, and that they can't get it 6 inches under is really surprising to me. And sorry about the trees, but that's the HOA. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other public comment? AGP, do we have anyone waiting in the queue for comment?
Thank you. Chair Stewart, currently, I do not see any raised hands in the queue.
All right. Thank you. We'll close public comment. Back to the commission.
Can I clarify something for a second?
Sure.
So, just based on the owner's comment, I wanted to make sure that denying the variance is denying the additional windscreen. It's not denying the roof deck.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yes. Yes. I think we understand that. Okay. Discussion. Asia?
Sorry. Could you, could you say again the square footage of the this second property? Second house, not the parcel, but...
I think the house is 1,800 square feet, and the garage is 471.
I mean, I don't really have anything to say, except that I like that this project is producing an additional home, an additional home under 2,000 square feet. I know that it's going to be a second home for someone, but I think it fulfills some of our goals of adding additional housing to some degree to the city, so...
Okay. Mr. Ingraffia?
Kudos to the design of this house, as well as the previous house, but I'm afraid the same logic applies, not surprisingly. The circumstances don't dictate the extension. And that's it.
Yeah, I'm going to say the same thing, I think. But, you know, again, compliments to the development team. Number one, nice try with the trees, but probably not. Number two, again, the materials, they're elegant. I think they're going to be easy to maintain. I like the contribution. Third, thank you for the renderings. Your renderings are very contextual. That helps us a lot. I really do have confidence that this will fit the neighborhood. The only other thing, and I'm sure you've considered this, is to try to drop the roof deck and lower part of the ceiling height and see if that would help you. I think you could do it inside, and, you know, I'm sure you thought of it. With that being said, I'm ready for a motion, whenever you're ready.
Let's see if we have anything from Mr. Rodriguez first. Mike?
Hi, Susan. Thank you very much. And I'd like to just reiterate what I said for the first application, which is that I could not make the findings that we have to make as a planning commission to approve it for the variance only. So, I'd like to thank the applicant as well for the great renderings. I mean, it was beautiful looking at all these, you know, design guidelines and stuff that they put together. So, it was really great. So, other than that, you know, that's about it. Thank you. Chair.
All right. Thank you. Okay. I think we may be ready for a motion.
So, in case number CDP 21-024 slash VAR 21-002, I make the motion that we approve and support staff's recommendations.
And I will second that.
Thank you. Ms. Hubbard, would you like to call the vote? Yes. Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Ingraffia?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Vice Chair Roche?
Yes.
Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Thank you. And thank you to the applicant, and good luck with your project. All right. Next up is New Business. We're flying along here. We have nothing on the agenda under New Business, and we have nothing listed under Unfinished Business, but I know there's always something. Mr. Rodriguez, do you have anything you want to mention under Unfinished Business?
Not this time.
Oh, excellent. All right. Planning Commissioner comments and future agenda items. Do any of the commissioners have anything?
I do. I guess what I'd like to address to the commission and staff, and I'm really grateful that our city council liaison is here. So, thank you. I think in the past two months, we've had some urgency around historic preservation. Two houses are going to be either moved or demolished. Both of them are gems, the Little Red House and Jim Maul's house, which was his own house and studio. And this commission struggled hard with both cases. But what I think we realized is, we really do need to move forward with a historic ordinance. And I would like to ask this commission, if we can't vote on it tonight, next time, to consider making a recommendation that staff takes this to council, or maybe you can do it just based on this conversation, and see if we can get this raised in terms of the workload that you have, so that you could actually have the work hours. I'm willing, and I think maybe Joe might join me, to help figure out how we might get this ordinance moving quickly. The reason I'm saying this is I think there's urgency. I don't want to lose, I don't think any of us want to lose another house of this caliber. These were absolutely great, great works of architecture, and the significance is large. So, I think to sort of keep reiterating what the loss is, is important, and we can change that. With an ordinance, we can find a way to make sure that, one, applicants are aware in advance of what they own. Two, we can do a modest report that looks at what buildings might be endangered. So, without even doing a full survey of Morro Bay, we can identify the top 10 buildings or top 20 that might be endangered. That would allow us to move very, very quickly with an ordinance that will at least, it doesn't guarantee protection, but it's much, much better than where we are right now, which is to sort of avoid the issue. So, you know, Carla, thanks for listening. I would hope Scott might take this tomorrow to a meeting or put it on the agenda for council next week and see what you folks think. But the urgency for us is real. And one more thing I'd like to add is, this is something that I've done on other commissions, which is to say that this commission would adopt the historic preservation ordinance that was submitted, and raise that to the level of priority, and suggest that staff share this with every applicant, so that the applicant realizes that this is a very serious issue for the commission. And it's something we really want to make clear to the applicants, that they know going in that preservation would be a consideration. So, those are the two things I just wanted to mention, and I don't think we can take a vote tonight, but I think it's more about the comments. And I'd love to hear from other commissioners if you guys have any thoughts on this issue.
We certainly had it as our primary goal in previous planning commissions in our goal-setting process. And we do have a fairly comprehensive and, I think, well-written draft ordinance. So, the question would be, is this something that would appear during the goal-setting process that we go- process that we go through? Do we need to agendize it for a future meeting so we can discuss it further?
So, I mean, I think possibly it gets, it gets wrapped into the goal-setting process that we're getting ready to kick off with. Literally, it's the schedule for the goal-setting process is going to city council at the next meeting. So the timing of it is certainly excellent, and I don't know how interested in, you know, maybe I'll talk to Scott about this, Scott Collins, city manager, about taking it outside of that process at this point. I'm sure he's been gearing up to make this happen, so, so it might be something that we just incorporate in there, and that's one of the recommendations that come out of the planning commission, which I assume there'll also be others. We're going to have probably a working group with the planning commission as an agendized item coming up here at a future meeting, hopefully, maybe even our next meeting. I'm still kind of mulling that over in my head. But as to where we can come up with items that we would be recommending to city council, at least that could be one meeting to start that conversation with, so it could be certainly incorporated into that. But, but yeah, I mean, I think it's a good idea to bring forward, and I mean, I know it's been, you know, a desire of the planning commission as a whole for, for several years since the historic committee came up with the ordinance. You know, they came here and discussed it with the planning commission, I think, on a couple of different occasions, while it was under preparation, and then after the fact, a couple of different times, so seems timely.
Excellent. Mr. Ingraffia?
Yeah, I wholeheartedly support the recommendation of Commissioner Rochen, and I'd be honored to participate in a subcommittee. And I recall, you know, mentioning at the last meeting that, that the Maul House on Beachcomber Drive, you know, really underscored the absolute urgency. We wish to have some kind of a historical preservation on the books much sooner than later. And, you know, and recently, I've been, I've been thinking about, you know, the unique character of Morro Bay. There's probably, you know, no community like Morro Bay, you know, south of the Bay Area in Oakland, and even then, you might have to search for it. And a primary ingredient, ingredient of that uniqueness are some of the historical buildings, which we're losing at a rather accelerated pace, so I, I think we got it, we should move on this quickly.
Okay, thank you.
If I could just add one more thing, I would like to agendize this for the next meeting in one way or the other, so we get a chance to talk about it at the next meeting, Scott. So if it doesn't quite fit your thing, I'd still like to get an agenda item so we can have a public discussion about it.
Can I get a, two other head nods over there for me again?
You know, as Joni Mitchell sings, "You don't know what you've got till it's gone," you know, so.
Nice.
Yes. And Susan, I was hoping I could make a comment, Susan.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I totally agree with what Commissioner Rochen and Commissioner Ingraffia said, as well as you. You know, and I think it's all about process at this point, but we need to move this ordinance forward to save history in Morro Bay. Every time we approve a project, we could potentially be losing history. So we did that recently, so we had nothing to use to try to preserve Morro Bay's history. So by having something like this, it's a tool that we can use, as Commissioner Rochen said, in working with applicants to preserve our history. So I'd like to just reiterate that, you know, it's very important, and the sooner we do it, but I believe that process is really what's going to get us there. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Mike. All right. Speaking of changes in history and all that, I am going to announce that I believe this will be my last planning commission meeting on the podium. My four-year term has expired, and I believe the next commission meeting will have the new commissioners? Or is that not till February?
First meeting in February.
Okay. So then I get one more meeting in with you, and we'll get this important historic stuff done. As most of you know, I've lived in Morro Bay for 33 years, when the rental property I was in sold in 2021, and I moved to Baywood Park in July of that year. The bylaws of the city state that a planning commissioner needs to be a resident and voter in city limits, but the council at the time allowed me to finish my term. Ownership of a business in Morro Bay and so many years of residency gives me an abiding loyalty to this community and concern for its future. I am sure that the applicants who have come forward and the current commissioners will be good stewards for this important position in the community. It's been an honor to serve this city for the last eight years on the General Plan Advisory Committee and the Planning Commission, and prior to that, on the Morro Bay Community Promotions Committee, which most of you probably don't even remember the existence of. It was before T-Bid. It was especially gratifying to see the general plan and updated zoning code to completion. I hope to continue to contribute to this town I love and offer my services on future ad hoc committees or other focus groups. As you might guess, one of my greatest concerns is for increased housing options as well as a more diversified economy. I have truly enjoyed working with city staff and have a great deal of respect for the dedication they show to their jobs and the time they put in with applicants, commissioners, council, interested citizens, and city leadership. My advice, because I'm an old lady gets to advise people, to incoming or existing commissioners is to do your homework. Don't be afraid to ask questions and get clarity prior to meetings if necessary. Make site visits. Do all you can to understand the projects put in front of you. Be fair, be practical, act in a timely manner, and be reasonable. In the years that I have been a resident and business owner, Morro Bay has not had the best reputation among people hoping to live in or make an investment in our community. I feel that council and staff, with prompting from leaders in the business community, have been working to change this narrative. City planners work closely with applicants to explain not only codes and coastal commission challenges, but to help them understand the nuances of community and commissioner concerns. Trust the experts and trust the process. Find your way to the yes whenever possible. You are all rock stars, and I believe the city is in good hands. Thank you. And with that, I guess I get one more meeting, so we're going to have to make it a good one. And do we have any community development director comments?
I don't have any, any items for this evening, other than to say the city council is taking up the interviews at the next meeting, at their next meeting next week on Tuesday for interviews of the planning commissioner candidates. I think there's six or seven of them, so.
Yeah, looked like a good field.
Yeah.
Pleased to see that. A lot of interest.
Really? Six or seven? Wow.
Yeah?
It's by far a record since I've been here.
Is it something we're doing right or wrong? I know, we got the, we got the general plan done, so it's not so overwhelming anymore. All right, well, I think we can.
Susan, Susan, before you close, since I'm in Arizona with all of the cactus out here, I just wanted, just in case, I wanted to say thank you very much for all your service to Morro Bay, and it's been a pleasure working with you as a planning commissioner. I just wanted to verbalize that, just in case. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mike, and likewise. All right, we will adjourn this meeting. The next meeting will be January 17th at 6:00. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair Stewart, and I've thought of you in many ways, but never as an old woman.